I'll call the meeting to order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is an open meeting of the Seward, Nebraska governing body, the city of Seward, applied by the Nebraska Open Meetings Act in conducting business. A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is displayed on the north wall of this meeting room facility as required. Disclosure of meeting recording processes is posted in the meeting room. A participant's signature sheet is available for use by any citizen addressing the council. The presenter shall approach the podium, say their name and address for the clerk's record, and ask limited remarks to five minutes. All remarks shall be directed to the mayor, who shall determine by whom any appropriate response shall be made. The city of Seward reserves the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda if necessary, and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the roll.
Welcome.
Present.
Beck, Camper, Coleman.
Here.
Holderman.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Singleton.
Here.
Schmidt. Hendricks.
First item this evening is the draft minutes of December third, twenty nineteen. We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please register your votes, please sway the votes.
Wanting in favor, welcome back here, Coleman, Miller, Singleton, motion carried.
Next item are items one through five of the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
We have a motion, is there a second? We have a motion and a second, please register your votes, please sway the votes.
Wanting in favor, welcome back here, Coleman, Miller, Singleton, motion carried.
Uh, next we have the confirmation of mayor appointments, these are all council member appointments for.
Dan.
Right, yeah, yes, okay, so we'll start with the confirmation of item one, then we'll get on to the liaisons. So, item one is to reappoint Dan Brom to assistant fire chief for a two-year term.
And move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please register your votes, please sway the votes.
Wanting in favor, welcome back here, Coleman, Miller, Singleton, motion carried.
Now we'll get to the more, the exciting liaisons. Uh, item number two, we have, uh, two A is the fire department, John Singleton. B cemetery board Sid Camper, C tree board Lisa Hendricks. D is parking wreck board Ellen Beck and Chris Schmidt. E civic center commission Sid Camper and John Singleton, F is planning commission with Chris Schmidt and Sid Camper. And G is library board Jessica Colton and John Wilken. Unless there's anyone that want to do any horse trading real quick, I assume we're fine with those? Okay.
To approve.
Alright.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes, please sway the votes.
Wanting in favor, welcome back, Camper, Coleman, Miller, Singleton, motion carried.
On administrative items, item number one is recommendation to the Nebraska Liquor Control Convention, a special designated liquor license be issued to Route Six LLC one twenty-three, South Sixth Street for an event at Harvest Hall on February seventh, twenty twenty. Bonnie, do you have anything to add to that?
This is Route Six, first application, uh, for an SDM and our ordinance that I asked them before the council.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes, please sway the votes.
Wanting in favor, welcome back, Camper, Coleman, Miller, Singleton, motion carried.
Item two, award bid to Garing Construction and Ready Mix Company for the Waverly Road Improvements project in the amount of three million, six hundred forty-three thousand, one hundred thirty-five dollars and thirty-two cents for Group A, a city portion, and Group B county portion. Jake?
Good evening, uh, so we received bids, uh, for the Waverly Road project finally. Um, bids came in lower than, uh, we expected as far as the engineer's estimate that we had on the project, which is excellent. Uh, we have a lot of, I mean, we have five total bids, which is really good, um, so we have good competitive bids. Um, Garing Construction has done a few projects in town, uh, we've also awarded them as a subcontractor to Van Kirk for the rail campus, so they've done all the painting out there. Um, they're also a sub to, uh, Van Kirk on the turn lanes, and they're the general for, uh, East Seward Street, so they'll actually build those in that sequence, uh, and then get to Waverly Road, uh, later in twenty twenty.
Any questions for Jake? Yes, Greg?
Just a comment, Jake, because this doesn't include a city portion and a county portion, and I know we have Becky here tonight. But we did, I did confirm today, and Becky can speak to it on the record, uh, that we're awarding the county portion as well, we'll oversee the project in pursuit of the interlocal we entered into. They'll pay, uh, and be, uh, billed out for those accordingly. But Becky, anything you have to add, or you guys were good with the bids and how everything worked out?
Yes, it's according to our interlocal, yes.
Okay.
Any council questions or comments? If not, we entertain a motion?
Motion approved, then. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes, please sway the votes.
Wanting in favor, welcome back, Coleman, Miller, Singleton, motion carried.
Item number three, award bid to, is it Gana?
Gana.
Gana? Gana Trucking and Excavating for the Middle Pond Improvements Project at the Seward Community Golf Course in the amount of ninety-nine thousand, two hundred forty-three dollars.
Um, okay, this is the pond improvement project that was budgeted by Parks and Rec. Uh, our budget was actually ninety thousand, uh, so before tonight, we did some, uh, front work with Gana to see what we could maybe do, um, ourselves with city forces, uh, to try to reduce that, and currently we have some information from Gana to reduce the price by twelve thousand, six hundred bucks roughly, uh, which would, um, include some work, uh, by Parks staff, uh, we have skate moderators and things like that, that we can, uh, do some of that work ourselves. Um, so that's currently what we're planning on doing is issuing a change order after award tonight to get this under budget.
Any questions or comments for Jake? Yes, Ed?
Jake, does, uh, Gana have experience working on golf courses? They know how, like, not to tear up more than they need to?
Um, so our, our plan specified the actual haul routes that they have to stay within, and then also specified the area around the pond that they are limited to, and that's one of the things that they, um, we are going to do for them is all the restoration of all the grass around. That was one item that they had in there, was an additional, like, forty-two hundred bucks to restore additional areas for, like, turning around and things like that. Um, I had in there that we would restore the first fifty feet, they thought that they would need more than that, so that's why the additional cost was in there, and again, I think our staff, um, would like to see it put back the way they want to see it done anyways, so utilizing our staff to reduce that price, I think is, is best. Um, to speak to their experience on a golf course, I'm not sure, um, I couldn't tell you that. They are, the biggest portion of this, uh, project is trucking, um, we've got a lot of material that we have to truck out, a lot of material to truck in as far as the rep rap goes, and they're a trucking company, so that's what they do best.
Any other questions or comments? Otherwise, if you entertain a motion?
Move to approve the bid to Gana Trucking?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes, please sway the votes.
Wanting in favor, welcome back, Camper, Coleman, Miller, Singleton, motion carried.
Item four, amendment number three to scope, uh, scope of services agreement with Olson for the survey and replat of block two and three of Seward Rail Campus PUD original edition. Jake?
Yes, this is a replat of the least two blocks of the rail campus. Um, we spoke before about replating these two blocks and why, uh, this was kind of the step that the county recommended is that we replat these two blocks, uh, the north block will include the right away that we originally replatted and also regrind, rearranged the lots, um, as we discussed, uh, for, and the south block would include the sliver of ground that's part of the agator property that we purchased, uh, that abuts the Goldenrod. Uh, so it's necessary to replat that, um, so those are the two blocks that are in this replat. The next step is, after we replat this, is to include the first addition, which is the agator property and the heat property, so that's what we're counting on, but this is the first one.
Any other questions or comments for Jake? If not, entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes, please sway the votes.
Wanting in favor, welcome back, Camper, Coleman, Miller, Singleton, motion carried.
Item number five, ordinance authorizing the issuance of general obligation street bond, series twenty twenty of the city of Seward, Nebraska, in the principal amount of not to exceed five million, two hundred thousand dollars. A, for the purpose of paying the costs of certain streets and related improvements within the city, and B, to provide for the payment and redemption of certain outstanding highway allocation fund pledge bonds of the city of Seward, Nebraska. Greg?
Yes, uh, as noted, this is our, uh, ordinance authorizing, uh, these GEO bonds, essentially for street projects that we teed up this year, uh, through the budgeting plan. Those are the Waverly Road project, the Seward project, and then the North Columbia, uh, resurfacing project. It goes, that continues on from what we started last year from Lincoln to Hillcrest. Uh, additionally, these roll in, um, funds from prior highway allocation funds, and Paul can speak to that when he comes up. Um, but while we had Jake up here, I wanted to note, on those three projects, due to the fact that we are losing Jake and unsure of the fact that we may have a civil engineer, city engineer on staff when these go and get built this summer, we wanted to ensure that these had a built-in, uh, element to cover engineering costs for construction management and oversight, which was never in those original projects, and they were not in the bids that you guys approved. So if we do need to bring somebody with some expertise to, to do some onsite management of those projects, those were built in and the numbers were provided by Jake to Nick and Paul ahead of time. That makes up approximately, I think, four point two, I think, is what it is in here, and then Paul will speak to some of the extras that are in there. Obviously, we won't have, we won't have to use up to or allocate to five point two, but we need to have the cushion because we can't come back later on and add more to it. Paul will speak to that, but if you have any questions specifically to the projects, that would be Waverly Road, East Seward Street, and the, um, North Columbia overlay project that we put in the budget and plan to go out for bonds for, that would be questions for Jake, wise up here.
Any questions or comments for Jake on item number five?
There we go.
This might.
Right, no question.
Might be for Jake, but, uh, Greg, you might go and, uh, talk about it, on the East Seward, given the fact that we might be doing some annexation out there, and they, and the, the road might be going farther than we initially planned, that's all factored in here as well, so.
That is not factored in here.
That is not.
Because we don't have plans, we don't have specs, we don't have anything done to go further, whether it's, if we do the small portion, we may be able to plan and spec that up, as, as you and I talked about, the portion that goes to Goldenrod.
Right.
We may be able to plan and spec that up in-house with a new city engineer on staff. Um, to go all the way to the highway, if that were a potential, that, that's, the scope of that is too large for us to get finished up this winter, and that would have to be a, a lined-up project to tag on at the end. That's the balance there.
But there would be funds in here to go to Goldenrod if we were able to do that.
I believe so, as long as we're spending them on street projects, correct me if I'm wrong, Paul, that would be a small project.
We, we can make that work.
It's, it's just basically extending the project another few hundred feet, so.
Yeah, I think the original, what I thought the estimate was, was less than a hundred fifty thousand, based on the unit prices we have.
Yep. So that one, but the, the engineering and everything else that goes into doing the design and the scope to get it all the way to the highway is probably outside of the scope of this.
That I understand, though.
So.
Um, on the timeline for Waverly Road, um, given that Garing is doing all the other projects, and I guess Waverly that is on the back end of that, is that changing the timeline for Waverly Road significantly?
No, the, the deadline for Waverly Road was, uh, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Okay.
So they have all of, so essentially, the, next year, they're going to get the Goldenrod, the turn lanes, East Seward Street done first, in that order. And then they'll start on Waverly Road, and they'll finish it in twenty twenty-one.
Thank you.
Likely, Jake, they'll coordinate that to the portion adjacent to the school will be done next summer, not this coming summer, but the following summer.
Correct, um, I guess I, I can't verify that, um, they could tell me, yeah, we're going to be able to do, to do it, but, uh, that portion from Columbia to Carol K on Waverly Road has to be done. I think it had like May, late May to early August, so I, like I said, they've got a lot going on for us already. Um, so I don't think they're intending to do that this summer, but I can't verify, I would anticipate it to be done this summer.
But it will be in the summer window.
Correct, absolutely, that was the only real hard deadline that I had for the, um, the phasing, was that that portion had to be done in that window.
And I assume we're coordinating that with the school system too, so they're in the loop on all those things.
Yep, I coordinated that with, uh, their administration, if that would be okay, if that would work for them, if they still needed access, things like that, so, yeah.
Any other questions or comments in the council?
Turn up Paul?
Any questions for Paul?
Paul, you want to come up and say hi?
I would like to, um, I'll respect your time and really just say good evening, it's been a little while since I've been here, so certainly my pleasure to be here. Um, as stated, the ordinance for the general obligation, uh, street bonds would, uh, provide two, really, three purposes. One, to provide, uh, new funds for the projects being contemplated, and then the second purpose would be to take out the twenty thirteen and twenty thirteen B bonds for economic savings, we've screened some other general obligation bonds, and, uh, we've picked out the winners. Um, the others would be probably break even or lose a little bit of money at this stage, so we've, um, we've proposed to keep that bond issue at that five million or gold mark, five point two or less. Happy to answer your questions on that ordinance if I could, or any other general questions, I can do my best to answer.
We'll pay him to be here, so filter that.
Did your buddies work out though?
Um, Paul, is that five point two million, how much of this is for the payment or redemption of the outstanding?
It's about a half a million.
A half, okay.
Yeah, so if the, if the project sizes, uh, don't increase, as Greg mentioned, there's a little bit of cushion in there, I'd expect the total bond issue to be right on, right at like four point eight million, four million, seven eighty is where I have it sized now. We just want to build a little cushion in there in case, um, we learn something before we go to market. It would be our plan and expectation to complete our due diligence and other paperwork through January, and then be ready to go to market as early as February, um, but we have flexibility to hold off if we need to. We just want to make sure we are doing everything we can to, uh, act on your schedule, to make sure you have, uh, proceeds in place before the construction draws over.
Any other questions or comments on item number five? If not, would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
I'll introduce the ordinance.
Right, this is a long one, so it's like story time, day one. An ordinance authorizing the issuance of general obligation street bond, series twenty twenty of the city of Seward, Nebraska, in the principal amount of not to exceed five million, two hundred thousand dollars. A, for the purpose of paying the costs of certain streets and related improvements within the city, and B, to provide for the payment and redemption of certain outstanding highway allocation fund pledge bonds of the city of Seward, Nebraska, prescribing the form of such bonds to be issued, and authorizing officers of the city to approve certain final terms of the bonds, pledging funds to be received by the city from the state of Nebraska Highway Allocation Fund for the payment of said bonds, providing for the levy of taxes to pay for, to pay the interest on the prin, and principal of such bonds if necessary, and providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form and related matters. The ordinance has been read by title and is designated as ordinance number twenty nineteen dash thirty-six, and the title is hereby approved, and a motion to dispense with the statutory rule.
Uh, sorry.
A motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes, please sway the votes.
Wanting in favor, welcome back, Camper, Coleman, Miller, Singleton, motion carried.
This is ordinance number twenty nineteen dash thirty-six, would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read?
Move to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Uh, seeing none, again, the question is, should ordinance number twenty nineteen dash thirty-six be finally passed and adopted? Please register your vote, please sway the votes.
Wanting in favor, welcome back, Camper, Coleman, Miller, Singleton, motion carried.
Item number six is ordinance of the city of Seward, Nebraska, authorizing the issuance of water system revenue refunding bond, series twenty twenty of the city of Seward, Nebraska, in the principal amount of not to exceed two million dollars for the purpose of refunding all of the O A portion of the city's outstanding water system revenue bonds, series twenty thirteen, providing for necessary reserve funds and paying costs of issuance of said bonds. Greg?
Just a, a refinance at the time that we went out and worked with Paul and their group in regards to lining up financing and bonding for street projects, as always, doing his due diligence to look out for us. Uh, this was the one that was identified that we saw some savings in, so we'll let Paul get up and speak to it. Your question answered.
Yeah, thank you, we looked at the twenty thirteen, uh, twenty thirteen Bs, uh, twenty fifteens and twenty sixteens. Uh, right now, I think the size of the bond issue would most likely be in the neighborhood of a million, three twenty-five, because as of, uh, today's rates, the twenty sixteens, uh, and the twenty fifteens would not produce savings, so I think the bond issue would be, uh, significantly less. I also think that the, the savings is going to be, will exceed a hundred thousand dollars, I'm showing about a hundred and twenty right now. And the current rates you're paying is, uh, right at three point seven six, and if we hit the market where we, we think we would today, it'd be closer to two and a half, so uh, straight economic, uh, benefit, we wouldn't change the existing, uh, final maturity, we'll just keep everything in place like we always do, and we'll just switch up the high interest for all the ones that will be up there. And we would try to do this along the same time as the general obligation bonds, so we'll, uh, uh, we'll try to go maybe within the same week or two of marketing both, uh, series bonds, GEO and revenue bonds.
Any questions? Yes, Ellen?
How volatile has the bond market been over the last few months?
It's been fairly volatile, um.
So how can you project the savings?
Man, I'm using kind of what I think would happen today. What we'll do is, um, we'll, as I, we'll use the same approach as on the revenue bonds as we go with the general obligation bonds. Uh, we'll complete our paperwork, uh, in January, be ready to go sometime in February, and if, uh, rates move against us, which they could, we've seen rates hike up here recently, um, if for some reason the, any of these refinancings don't work, or the savings looks like it's maybe negligible, we'll talk to, uh, Greg and Nick about maybe changing that plan. You're, the city's not committed to refinancing any of these bonds, all these ordinances we'll do, we'll set the stage so you, so we can act and we can sell. Uh, if, um, like I said, if rates go, if rates move against us and we can't refinance bonds, if we won't refinance bonds, we'll just keep an eye on it and come back in June if the rates look better then, but at least we would have the authority to get the new money borrowing done, and, uh, leave the, uh, outstanding bond issues in place. We won't, we won't, uh, cause you to lose money because.
Any other questions? If, would anyone else like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduce the ordinance.
Chapter two. An ordinance of the city of Seward, Nebraska, authorizing the issuance of water system revenue refunding bond, series twenty twenty of the city of Seward, Nebraska, in the principal amount of not to exceed two million dollars for the purpose of refunding all or a portion of the city's outstanding water system revenue bonds, series twenty thirteen, and outstanding water system revenue bonds, series twenty thirteen B, providing for necessary reserve funds and paying costs of the issuance of said bonds, prescribing the form, terms, and details of said bonds, pledging and hypothesizing the revenue and earnings of the waterworks plant and water system of said city for the payment of said bonds and interest thereon, providing for the collection, segregation, and application of revenue of said waterworks plant and water system entering into a contract on behalf of the city with the holders of said bonds, repealing any conflicting ordinances, and providing for publication of the ordinance in pamphlet form. The ordinance has been read by title and is designated as ordinance number twenty nineteen dash thirty-seven, and the title is hereby approved. And a motion to dispense with the statutory rule.
Some.
Second.
A motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes, please sway the votes.
Wanting in favor, welcome back, Camper, Coleman, Miller, Singleton, motion carried.
Again, this is ordinance number twenty nineteen dash thirty-seven, would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read?
Some.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, again, the question is, should ordinance number twenty nineteen dash thirty-seven be finally passed and adopted? Please register your vote, please sway the votes.
Wanting in favor, welcome back, Camper, Coleman, Miller, Singleton, motion carried.
Item number seven, updated job description for street superintendent. Greg?
Alright, uh, as we tend to do.
Thanks, Merry Christmas, happy holidays.
You too.
Thank you. Thanks, Nick.
Yep.
Um, as we tend to do when we have openings, uh, in positions, we, we go and we look at the job descriptions and update those. It's a great time to update job descriptions, because when you have an opening and reset that, because we know we're also going to list it, we're going to have people in the public looking at it, and we want to set expectations correctly to what those are. And with the recent retirement of Mel Aldrich, the street superintendent, uh, that was the appropriate time for us to do that. And so Bonnie, myself, uh, and, uh, I think Bob Myers, our, uh, current foreman, all took a look at the job description, and we've provided you the recommendation here, but just giving it some of the, the normal nomenclature that we put in there in regards to the ability to lift certain amounts and things like that, that was never in there. Just kind of coded with the things that we normally have, I don't think there's anything, I guess Bonnie would agree with me, uh, majorly substantive in the change, it's just accurately listing things out the way they want it. And then the other one is our preferences, for purposes of just identification, we prefer to have a shorter, it's my preference, a shorter title for these rather than six different positions, and so you'll know, also, I believe the title has been changed to just street superintendent, uh, and what that entails is defined in the job description. Can I answer any questions you have about change?
Any questions or comments on item number seven? Not when you entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes, please sway the votes.
Wanting in favor, welcome back, Camper, Coleman, Miller, Singleton, motion carried.
Item number eight, ordinance admitting the comprehensive pay plan, omitting title and pay line for street superintendent. Greg?
Yes, um, as you know, we do comparability, and we try to update on an annual basis, and one of the ones that was just identified in comparability, clear back, I think, when Paul did it, and then also in the time that I've been undertaking it and, and using our status and formula, it was that the street superintendent position is extremely high. Um, and at no time had it been brought forth either by the personnel committee or this body to make any adjustments, amendments to that in the past. Again, we know the opportunity, when you have some of these positions opened up, that is the appropriate time to maybe look at adjustments, and so, uh, internally and discussing with Nick, myself, um, the mayor and, and Bonnie, we felt this was the appropriate time to realign that to be closer in line to where we see the comparable positions across the board in our comparability study, and so we're recommending only on the top end, bringing down the salary to be more within, uh, comparability, and so that's.
The range that we're looking at, specifically within the percentile.
We're, we're looking at, we're trying to, always with comparability, based on the C I R, we're trying to look in the ninety-eighth to a hundred and second percentile. Um, and the current, and I did update these numbers and contact city clerks and treasurers and these other towns to today's current data. Um, we're, we're sitting at a hundred and sixteen percent for this position, which is extremely high. And so I think it's appropriate to bring it down just to the hundred and second at this point. Uh, and that's still, you know, keeps it as a high wage in regards, it doesn't interfere with having it too close to the other positions it oversees, so that there's too much overlap. Uh, we have employees underneath you making significantly more, we don't have an issue with that. Uh, but this just more, brings this one back into line with expectations and what we see. In the other cities listed, you'll see the comparability sheet in there with Crete, York, Wahoo, Skylaw, Gretna, Beatrice, Fairberry, Plattsmith, Blair, Nebraska City Aurora.
The, the only risk that we run by doing this ahead of actually getting applicants is, you know, we're, we're basing these off of, of other numbers of other cities. We don't truly know what the market is until people apply and they start talking about what they say are their salary needs, and so we ran into this issue with the other position, like the finance director, where we may have to come back if for some reason, you know, we think that this is more in line with other communities, but if for some reason the market says it's not, we're going to have to come back and talk to you about how we could adjust that. But this is the right time to make these kinds of adjustments, and, you know, and also I think on a secondary level, it's, we also kind of want to be fair to other communities that are using us and their comparability, that we're not inadvertently throwing off their numbers, which then turns around and throws off, you know, we've talked about that ping ponging effect of, of adjusting those accordingly, so that's the reason we wanted to bring this to you at this time. So, uh, it is an ordinance, so are there any questions, first of all, or comments on item number eight? All are just ordinance. Okay. An ordinance to provide for annual classification of officers and employees of the city of Seward, Nebraska, to amend title and pay line of the street superintendent, to provide for longevity pay and payment of part-time employees, to provide for a date such classification and pay ranges of compensation shall become effective, to provide for publication in pamphlet form, to provide for a time when this ordinance shall take effect. The ordinance has been read by title and is designated as ordinance number twenty nineteen dash thirty eight, and the title is hereby approved. I need a motion to dispense with a statutory rule.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is, any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Again, this is ordinance number twenty nineteen dash thirty eight. Would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read?
So move. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, again, the question is, should ordinance number twenty nineteen dash thirty eight be finally passed and adopted? Please register your vote. Please display the votes. And this is the final ordinance for this evening, so only one, one last motion to make all the ordinances apart from the record.
So move. Second.
A motion and a second. Please register your votes. Please display the votes. Item number nine, authoricity of Seward to submit an application for retail class liquor license for the Seward Community Golf Course. Greg.
Yes, with the recent closure of Part fifteen, uh, Seward Community Golf Course, it was internally discussed by what I commonly refer to as the golf team working in conjunction with administration, uh, to look through what we could do for this upcoming season, if we wanted to go back out and try our hand at finding another tenant in there, or if we wanted to look at the opportunity, uh, to take on, uh, basically the, the bar portion, the clubhouse portion of, uh, the community golf course, take that over. Thus the responsibility and also the revenue that goes with it. And so we felt it was in the best interest to take care of issues like hours of operation, availability, uh, and also the, the revenue factor with continuing to, wanna find revenue sources to help support the golf course. We thought the best, uh, course of action to recommend, uh, to the city council was to establish the liquor license ourselves. Uh, and then we've done some initial planning that if we were to approve that, what would it look like in regards to operations? And so essentially what we would do is we'd move all the operations of the golf course within the building to the first floor as they used to be, uh, under the country floor. And so we wanted to bring this to you for initial authorization to essentially bless us to even put in an application, so we can work through the application process for that, and then it will come back to you again for approval, uh, as we normally deal with new applicants. We will list, the mayor will be the chief officer of the city in regards to the liquor application, and then the initial manager will be Cody, uh, since he's the most onsite in the building person. We felt that and talked with the golf committee, that that was the most appropriate person. Cody's willing to undertake that effort, uh, and he doesn't have any issues that he knows of that would impede his ability to acquire that, uh, that management certificate for, for operations. So Bob Corrigan's here, uh, who's on our golf committee team, um, so we can answer any questions. Bob will be doing a lot of the work over the winter, uh, if, if we do decide to move forward with this and trying to help the staff out there get things rearranged and prepped for, um, golf season come March, April, so.
So we're just having the bar, no food, we're not going to pursue food vendor?
At this point, no. That, we'll, we'll have food offerings, but it will be on the, the small level. So, uh, snacks, things vending night, uh, you know, sandwiches, stuff like that, but we're not gonna be operating commercial level food grade at this point.
And we can always do that later without a license, it's just the liquor part is a little bit more involved. And I talked to Liquor Control Commission about other cities that, that do this, and, and they use like Omaha as the model where the mayor is listed, because we're technically, we're a corporation, we're, and so we fall under that same sort of definition. Um, our titles just don't match up, but instead of being the president or the C E O, you know, the mayor or the clerk and those kinds of roles. But their, their recommendation was to do it that way, and that way, if, if the manager, for example, were to leave and own a position, we would just do another application for a new manager, liquor license would continue. Other communities like Lincoln sometimes have issues because they'll want their golf pro to have the liquor license. Well, then if the golf pro leaves for some reason, they have to go through this whole process of getting that, someone else with the new liquor license, and then there's, a- and that's, the, the Liquor Control Commission said that this is the preferred way for them and to ma- make sure that things run smoothly and transition smoothly. And so the other items, like with food and those things, those will be further discussions as we kinda wade into that for the first time. But for right now, we just wanted to make sure that, you know, any of the, the alcohol, um, needs of, of the members and guests would, could be met on day one, and so that's when this process starts.
Are we assuming any additional liability?
Um, not, I mean, hmm, the short answer is no. Um, there is always the potential that if an employee serves to a minor, there could be some consequences from Liquor Control Commission or, or over-serving. I mean, we still have to follow all those laws. But that would be, I mean, we have liability with our sidewalks and our parks, and, and we're kinda walking liability, uh, to some extent. And so it'd just be a different type of liability we haven't had before. Did you, Kelly, you have anything to add? Is that fair?
Yeah, I mean, we're serving alcohol, so.
Yeah. No, they're, they're, it just, I'm not gonna go down rabbit hole too far, but some states do have what are called dram shop laws where if someone were to leave and get injured, the server could be held liable. We don't have that issue in Nebraska at this time, but that, that would be a bigger liability issue if somebody were to be over-served, for example, goes and gets hits and kills someone on the road. Um, there have been some instances where that's happened, but that's, that is, as a dram shop law, it's typically in other states.
We'll work with Cody and the whole team out there as we hire, because we'll, obviously, we'll also have to look at employees to ensure that everybody we have out there can serve alcohol in the first place. It provides us a, a level of efficiency, the biggest, one of the largest complaints we had, we sent out a golf survey to all the membership this past fall. One of the largest complaints we got was the availability, the hours of operation of Part fifteen, where we'd have people come on ten o'clock, eleven o'clock on a Saturday or Sunday, uh, usually Saturdays, but, uh, they're not even open. And they want to get a Gatorade, or they wanna get a soda, or they wanna get a Bloody Mary, or whatever it is. That's a, that's a normal expectation of every other golf course there is, and we were not fulfilling that under those obligations. This will eliminate that because we will always have somebody there with the facility open, thus we'll be able to. So we're gonna eliminate what was one of the largest complaints we heard from the membership. And so, uh, and then the other side of it is, is just the revenue side. This will significantly increase the revenue, uh, for the golf course, um, and help offset the expenses out there, because we operate the golf course at considerable expenses, you see every year in the budget, so this will help significantly.
Any other questions or comments on item number nine?
I move to approve the authorization of the submitting of the applicant.
Second.
The motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Next, we have the city administrators' report.
Um, the report is in there. Uh, I would just note, uh, we're in the process of a significant number of hires still. We just hired three public property workers. Uh, we listed the city engineer position, we'll be hiring a new administrative aid position in city hall and looking through applications. They're finishing up the C S O application process. Uh, the civic center, Randy Staley is retiring, so the civic center position that was open, and then we'll be listing after today, the highway or the, uh, street superintendent position. So a lot of turnover, and there's a lot of work involved in that through interviews and the H R process and everything else. And so that's taking up a ton of our time right now. Let's see, FEMA, that one's been a big one, the, the staff's been a big help in trying to finish up some of our FEMA dollar stuff, and so that's what I've been working on predominantly. And we're trying to circle back, one of the last ones for, one of the items that, that Councilman Camper has hanging over was a discussion, uh, annexation. And we hope Jake, myself, Tim Dorak, the zoning administrator, and Jonathan Jank, uh, met with some various property owners that were involved in the annexation discussion, and we were able to finally about a week ago or so, have that sit-down discussion with some adjacent property owners of the city. So we think we'll be able to put together a plan for annexation, and we'll need to get Kelly to answer some questions for us just on process and procedure, on how that will work. And so we'll work those out, those details out, and then we may be bringing forth a plan for some annexations for you. Uh, and then me and Jake, if we can, if I stop having kids get sick, we'll have the final numbers built up of where we're at on the rail campus apologies, Councilman Camper, I've been out two and a half days out of the last four days. Sick kiddos, can't seem to get them to shake it, so I apologize for that. But I can answer any other questions and things you have.
Parking. It was supposed to be on the agenda last time.
Parking.
Downtown, uh, by the new restaurant.
Oh, that's part of Jake's been working on that N D O T one, and so we're just trying to finalize what we're gonna do with that. I will note, um, i- in looking at that, another one that was brought up, uh, at a public forum just yesterday, actually, there was an abundance of this, was the discussion of looking at some other solution to Fifth and Seward Street other than just pulling parking back. I was at a Qantas presentation, and there was tons of people there that wanted to talk about that. Uh, and the one that was brought up was the recommendation of a four-way stop, just a signed four-way stop at Fifth and Seward.
The only thing is, you can't see even at the stop sign, if you got a long bed pickup.
I was trying to figure out where the, where you would be able to see the stop sign, that's what I was trying to figure out.
So unfortunately, again, you're gonna, we're gonna have to, uh.
Yeah, like in B, can we put it in the middle of the street?
There's lots of things you can do, but unfortunately, we're gonna have to discuss it with the engineer. But we're trying to get, because we're gonna be looking at parking all over downtown, and that also includes A D A over in that area as well.
It'd be nice to do something soon, be- before we do have a wreck.
Okay.
Or somebody gets hit.
Kelly or anyone on the council, do you guys remember when you guys specifically designated those compact spots? Did you just do it?
Yes.
You, you didn't do, but you didn't even have a resolution, you just went out and plucked down signs.
Yeah, we determined, Mel was involved in that, and just determined the size of the vehicles, so we could see, people could see around.
And just put them down, you didn't pass a resolution for them? Okay. The other option is.
I'm not sure about that.
There was a motion.
We had some kind of, because whenever we, when the administration has not put up like, when it comes to stop signs, we've always come to the council to get approval, to make sure otherwise. Because any one time, there are a lot of signs, the council doesn't want so many, and then people start wanting more signs, or, yeah. So I, I don't think we would have done it without the council.
We'll have another parking one coming in regards to Hillcrest and, and Eastridge and Holtermann and all of those streets over there next to the university. The traffic committee worked out, uh, some distances for some red line parking. We were having issues with people parking over the sidewalk, in front of like, on the street side. And so we have some recommendations to help with turn radius, so people can actually get around each other and keep on traffic there.
You're talking about up toward Concordia?
Yes, so we'll, right now, all we have is the stop sign, red line parking. We're gonna recommend red line parking on both sides initially to match, and that gives a proper radius for people that they're coming off Hillcrest to turn around, the people that are sitting there. So if somebody comes down to the south, you're stuck. If you can't go, they can't go, and you get stopped, and so this will, and so you will see one on that one. We need to work that out with the traffic committee. It's a lot of recommendation on that.
But we're hoping to kinda do these more as a comprehensive effort and not kinda piecemeal, like each, you know, s- street or intersection separately, and so have kinda one broader discussion, because some of these are kinda related, and we wanna be consistent on, on what we decide to do and, and what makes the most sense, and, and of course, you know, ensure safety of, of residents and visitors, so.
Are you letting the residents know?
That one, we only, I think there's only one driveway, on that one, there's only one driveway that's affected. We will let them in, otherwise there's no, it's not going into a point where it's covering up everyone's parking.
So you're talking about on the, on the Hillcrest Columbia intersection, you're saying, okay.
East.
East.
All of those. Some of them are already marked out that way, we just wanna make them all consistent. It's just that motion getting around each other, so.
Any other questions about the report? Well, before you start asking, we put out a survey to the golf membership to give them the options of the names that you were presented with, and so we will see what they say. We gave them the current name, the two suggested names, and then an option for an other, if they wanted their own ideas.
Weren't there three suggested names?
Well, we had Patriot Pines, and then we had Eagle Ridge.
Oh, okay.
And then we had the original, well, current name, and then an other, in case they wanted to suggest something. And you know what, maybe we'll get a really cool suggestion we haven't thought of, so that's why you don't have the name yet, because we wanna give them an opportunity to vote. So if you happen to get that, one vote per person, don't be stuffing the ballot boxes.
Don't be trying to trick the system.
Is, is there anything else? Otherwise, would you motion to accept the report?
Uh huh.
Second.
A motion and a second. Please register your votes. Please display the votes. Any future requests for council agenda items or administrative action?
Did we ever come back to some type of contingency plan for, since we buy worse ones out there? You know, we put in, uh, storms, sewer fix it and everything, but one of the things, have we got that contingency plan?
That was one of Mel's projects for this six-month period, and he's no longer here, so that will move to.
It's still, it's still in the works, it's just gonna be delayed a little bit.
Right, under, understand. I just don't want us to.
Yeah, no, I know, we don't wanna forget either.
Yeah. Sid, you have it?
Okay. I saw someone over there go like this. If no other items, okay, then we will move on to upcoming events. Jonathan Jank, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, we have, uh, copy and contacts, uh, Thursday, January ninth. They'll remind you as we get to, uh, your first meeting in January at, um, Pack Bar Chiropractic, welcoming a new doctor to town. Uh, again, reminder to put on your calendars, and we appreciate the city's support for our annual awards banquet, which is on Monday, January twenty seventh, so we'll be sending out ticket information soon. Um, and you may have, uh, seen, we sent out a press release, um, that Seward was awarded through the Mid-America Economic Development Council, running up award for the Economic Impact Deal of the Year for communities fifty thousand population and below in the Midwest. That's representing twelve states, and that was for the schooler project. Uh, that's a really big deal. Um, Seward will feature in Site Selection Magazine, that's the main magazine that site selectors get across the United States, moving in and out, so really big deal, and kudos to the community for that award. Thanks, Mayor.
And with that, I need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion and a second. Please register your votes. Please display the votes. Thank you, everybody.